Yeah, how did that go? Yeah. How old is she?
Twenty-eight.
I was gonna send this to Jim Camp because of course the guys would know.
It's good to get some like different age group, like some younger, some older.
Really youngest is Robbie Thompson.
Yeah, they got their big partners. Clean up.
I'm just gonna never get that.
I see that in our office, like when we had Paula, Jean and I all around the same age. It's better to have it spread out than with Megan.
A dumpster to the street, I may blather. What, what kind of dumpster? Like a forty-yard or thirty-yard long dumpster?
Yeah, yeah.
Wasn't there earlier today, was it?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't.
Might be time to get through that chief. But there's a car parked on the other side, so we're welcoming you back. I guess we will.
So, whoa, whoa, wait a second. The, the, the dumpster's not even on the parking side of the street?
So, one side of the street and there's a car parked on the other side of the street.
Mikes are live. It's probably already been announced. I was told I got fired last night, so. That's probably where the mattress is.
Not that house, but.
What happened?
We moved you down there so you're not on the end.
Love it. Got the high chair.
Yeah. And not on the end.
Much preferred.
Everybody keep in mind the mics are hot right now because the video feed is live. So, anything you say will get picked up by one of these mics. Keep that in mind.
Good evening YouTube.
All right. All right, apologies for being a couple of minutes late. The board had an attorney-client session that just finished up. But we're, we've got an ambitious meeting tonight, so we're gonna get started. So, if I can start by having everybody stand, face the flag for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, take your seats. Okay. All right, I'd like to make a motion to open up the April twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four business meeting for the Village Board of Cornwall and Hudson. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, five ayes to open the meeting. And four, I'm sorry, four ayes, that's right. So, tonight Deputy McCain is out of town, so he is not here. So, you're gonna miss that familiar face, but we do have a quorum. So, we're gonna continue. Um, first thing we're gonna do is open the floor up for public comment. For public comment, we had asked that you keep your comments to three minutes. Um, you'll first state your name and your residence for the record. And there will also be an opportunity after all the agenda items tonight. So, there are two opportunities to speak. So, you can choose to speak at the beginning or you can choose to speak at the end, whichever works best for you. So, with that having been said, I know that Ms. Helt is going to speak. So, I'm gonna have you go last because yours is gonna be a little bit more lengthy at, at the board's discretion. So, yes ma'am, Ms. Gazda.
Barbara Gazda, Nineteen Homeland Avenue. Um, I have a question about the new pavilion at the waterfront. Are we going to allow, um, sound systems, DJs, um, acoustical, you know?
Enhancements type thing?
Yeah. What's the board's?
So, so the village's bo- noise ordinance, which has a particular decibel level, will be in effect just like it is everywhere else within the village. The only time we go outside of that is when we have village-approved events. New Year's Eve for the ball drop. If we have movies on the Hudson, if we have a band at the concert, you know, the concert series, the Bandstand series that we have here at the Bandstand and sometimes down at the gazebo. As far as anybody coming in and renting the property down there, the pavilion, which they're allowed to do, um, any type of sound system would have to be a separate agreement with this board. And I can tell you right now, I don't think that's part of any agreement that we would make with somebody. The same rules as far as decibel levels that apply to Mrs. McGillicuddy sitting in her folding chair down at the water feeding the geese, and she happens to bring a little bitty portable radio, would apply to people that are underneath the pavilion.
So, um, first you're saying that it, that the decibel levels that are in the code already are applicable. But you're also saying that the board isn't inclined, you would think, um, to having DJs and, or does one, I mean?
You would have to put an application in, and if that was part of their application, I'm not gonna speak for the board, but I don't think I would be in favor of somebody having a DJ down there for a, an event at the pavilion when the park is for everyone. So, their rights end where the other folks' rights begin, that, that type of thing. So, no, we have no plans for that.
Okay, cuz my understanding is, is that the park is a passive park. That's how it was, it's always been, so, yeah.
Sure.
Okay. Let's, um, are we gonna have simultaneous, um, events going on at the gazebo and the pavilion?
At the gazebo and the pavilion, that would be something as we're booking them because we have a computer system now that does it. It's much more technical than what I would do, which would be on a paper desk calendar. But obviously, if there's a wedding down there, um, that would be something that would have to, we would have to take in effect as far as what we would do with the pavilion. And if the pavilion is already booked, we would say to the people that wanted. The pavilion and the gazebo, or the shelter at the north end of the park, are significantly far enough away. So, if you had an event of fifty people at the, at the vil- at the pavilion, and you had a small wedding at the gazebo, I don't know if they would interfere with each other, other than parking.
So, it sounds like that's, the area's a little gray at this moment.
Well, it, my concern is just, is trying to put too much into law where it ties everybody's hands. Some of this is just gonna have to be at board discretion. But your concerns are well-founded and you're thinking things out to the nth degree. We've done a lot of that, but I also know that there're gonna be things that we haven't thought about. It's going to come up, and then I'm gonna have to speak to the board and say, what are we gonna do with this? So, yes, those are things that we will consider.
Okay. Um, the other thing that, um, applies to the waterfront as well is, um, has the board considered any kind of a parking plan? Because quite honestly, when I go down there, I compete with the app visitors. And that is personally insulting to me, that there's no area that's just designated for the app visitors. Um, like I say, the, the app is, is, applies to every parking spot.
Yeah.
And, um, I just think that in fairness to those of us who live here, that something should be developed so that it, it doesn't work out that way.
And, and, and to your point, the board has agreed to, in regards to the reservation policy for the pavilion, established a tier system so that village residents get to reserve it six months in advance, town residents four months in advance, and out-of-towners two months in advance. But Ms. Gazza, this is something that I learned and I had clubbed over my head like a cudgel by New York State when the Department of State came down here as we worked through the four-point-five-million-dollar grant on New York Forward. That waterfront, as they tell us all the time, we don't own that. Yeah, we're responsible for it. Yes, it's our, it's, it's, it's in the village of Cornwall and Hudson, but it's not our property. And they remind us of that all the time from the perspective in the sense of, you will not be eligible for any grant monies unless that park is open and available to everybody. And if I restrict parking spaces and say, this is just for village residents and these spots over here for the app residents, I don't think that's gonna meet muster legally.
Well, I mean, I, I, there's what, seventy-some spots down there?
Seventy-eight parking spaces, three handicapped, and eight boat trailers. There's a lot, but there's not enough with some of the volume that we get, but.
So, if you're, I mean, there are gonna be passes that are, uh, parking, um, passes that are be giving out when the gazebo and the pavilion are used, correct?
Yes, but the board has agreed that we would not authorize more than ten per event. So, for a wedding, it's ten, and for the pavilion, it would be ten.
I mean, I don't think that even if we were to, to, um, I'm not saying to, to make it, um, so heavily restricted, but I don't think, um, even, even cutting it in half is, or, or a third to two-thirds is unreasonable. Um, but there, there, with these kinds of events going on, particularly if we have two simultaneously, um, the park on a, on a very nice day could be, um, you know, I could be competing with the apps or any of the residents could be competing with the apps. So, I, I, I seriously, you know, before we, we, um, have all of this happening, I think the parking, a parking plan is kind of basic to, in consideration of everything. So.
I, I will take that under advisement. Let's me and you talk about that offline. I, I'm looking at this since this year is new for us. First of all, we're post-COVID, right? Where everybody discovered that we live here and we exist here, and we have this wonderful bounty of, of land down there on the water.
Mm-hmm.
We have to adjust to that. But with the new pavilion this year and how that's going to affect things, I'd like to give it a year and a trial and see what happens. And if we do have particularly difficult times in July and August, then I'd be happy to look at some other solutions. I don't know if restricting parking would fly legally. Joe, is that something that the village board could just make a determination on and say, we're gonna keep this for residence parking only, and this is for everybody else in a waterfront that New York State reminds me all the time, we don't own?
But we have a permit system already.
Yeah, but as far as, I understand what, you're a hundred percent right. You know, as far as funding, the park has to be open to the public generally. So, how do you both keep it open generally and try to have a set aside for village residents? I'm not disagreeing that maybe that's the right thing to do, but how do you get there is, is the tough thing.
Well, I, I think in terms of the people who, who live here and have permits, some, some people pay for them, um, they should be given some consideration.
Okay.
End of story, thank you.
All right, thank you ma'am. All right, anybody else wish to speak, public comment? Seeing no one else. Buffy, you ready?
Sure.
All right. Eileen, you're coming up too?
Come on, I'm just about.
All right.
I have Buffy Helt, uh, Sixth Sengen Lane. Definitely too tall for me.
S-E-N-G-E.
Uh, we, I wanted to, I spoke to the mayor and we thought this, uh, idea would be good to bring to everyone. Uh, Vivian Collins, a village resident, uh, approached me and she has four sculptures that she would like to loan to the village and town. Uh, she would like two in the village and two in the town. So, um, so, I, so I guess basically, we went down to the waterfront today. There was a nice spot that, um, we took a look at. And, uh, so we're trying to figure out the second place in the village. Uh, we also, Eileen and I, wherever Eileen is, we applied for an upstate art, uh, spot for Cornwall and Cornwall and Hudson, uh, which in the past was it brings about how many?
Three hundred thousand visitors.
To the, to their website and.
Four-day weekend of self.
In July.
Homeling art around.
So. So, we also think.
Be included on a tour, is what you mean?
We are, yes, yes. Storm King is part of it and, um, like Dia Beacon. Uh, I, I don't remember how many spaces are part of it.
They'll be announcing, um, everything.
Yeah. So, we moved to the second round, so that was positive. So, we feel like, um, it's moving in a positive direction. So, we, uh, we would like to make this happen with Vivian's sculptures that she would like to donate. Uh, there will be insurance, but I have found private donors that will cover that insurance. So, there will not be a cost to the town and village. Uh, the only thing that we will need some help doing will be some installing. She has her private installer that will help us as well, but she said she may need some help digging some extra holes. So, uh, so that's where that is. She, um, yeah, so that's, that's where things lie at this point.
So, Buffy?
Yes, the big thing is the time constraint. She, yes, she, um, needs to move them from their current spot.
Yep.
To the town and village by Sunday, the twenty-eighth of April. So, it's very quick turnaround.
So, I know this was on the town's agenda last week, and I clued in to that part of the meeting to listen to it, um, in regards to this. And just to, to help edify people, um, this artist, I believe her husband for forty years ran the Storm King Arts Center. Is that correct?
Yes.
And this artist is the artist that can, that put together the sculpture that is part and parcel of Bridge Street right now. That's in the town of Bridge Street, the orange sculpture there. Um, yes, that sculpture itself is valued at twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, insurance for that per annum is about four hundred dollars. Um, the four sculptures that the artist has now, um, that she's looking to, to loan, two to the town, two to the village. I spoke to Josh. I think they're looking at one location, possibly at the library, maybe one at Ring's Pond. And then the village was looking at possibly one, you know, down at the river, maybe at the farm or up here somewhere.
Right.
Um, I, I thought it was a wonderful idea. These sculptures are thirty-five thousand dollars apiece. So, you're still looking now at between four and five hundred dollars per sculpture to, to insure. Do I think that the taxpayer should pay that? No, but in the discussion the town had, it was the same thing. If we could reach out, um, the village is not allowed to fundraise. So, I can't go out and solicit for donors, but if we had people that came forward and said we would cover that, I think it'd be a wonderful thing to do, um, for a year to see how it goes. Um, you know, Storm King Mountain, the birth of the modern environmental movement, we're a bedroom community of West Point. We're big into the arts with the Storm King Arts Center, um, the Greater Cornwall Chamber of Commerce with the Art Walk. Um, all these really, really cool things are happening, and this is part and parcel of something I think that would be really, really neat. Whatever your, whatever your taste is in art, and I'm a little bit more conservative in my tastes in art. I like a Rembrandt, but however, um, I think this is really neat. I've seen it in other communities and it brings people in. And to Buffy's point, you know, people would come here, they're gonna spend money in, in our establishments. They're, they're gonna eat here, they're gonna drink here, they're gonna walk here and, and spend money, and that's a good thing. So, um, I am in favor of it. The town council is grappling with this. They're probably gonna have to have a special meeting this week because of the time-sensitive nature in it. And I would say to the board, I don't think we need to pass a resolution tonight. If I needed to do that, I could call a special meeting later in the week. But does anybody have any misgivings about the village taking possession on a loan-type basis of two pieces of art with donated insurance? As long as we could agree on a potential location. And I believe that they have to be moored to either concrete slabs or, or footings. Um, and you suggested that this, this artist has somebody that handles that, that could work with our guys to, to, to do that.
Right. Also, the insurance that we have, uh, applied for, they said that we will need to do some small fencing around the bottom of it. They suggest like eighteen inches. Uh, I think that's to cover them as well. So, that will be a part of it. We'll make sure that it's very aesthetically. We're not gonna do something that wouldn't, you know, be part of the environment, look nice. Um, and it is for one year, so.
And then I know this question has also come up, you know, well, what about other artists? And well, this artist is someone that has been involved with the town before. Um, family ties, long-term ties to the Storm King Arts Center. And again, if we did this for one year and then next year, open it up to other artists and say, if anybody's interested in, in displaying their art, like they do on the walls of Leo's Pizzeria or in a number of the other restaurants in, in Cornwall, we could, we could be open to that. So, yeah, go ahead, ask.
How big are these pieces of art?
They are, and I can send you all the dimensions of their, the four of them. They are about, um, yeah, I think it's eighty-six inches tall, mo- the majority of them. So, they're a little over like seven feet-ish. And they are, um, about not quite six feet wide. So, um, I, and I can, I can send you all the, the links to all of them, of course.
Pictures and, yeah.
I will.
Can you email that to me and I'll get it out to all the board?
Yes.
Soon as you email it to me, I'll get it to the board.
Yes, definitely.
Okay? Any other questions for Buffy in regards to?
Buffy, what about, um, I mean, generally, does, I mean, the, Bridge Street is a pretty wide-open, uh, highlighted place. What about security? I mean, I, I, I'm not saying they need security guards or anything, but, I mean, is that something that they normally think about?
She said that they are, they'll, once they have concrete footings, they're gonna be.
Okay.
Not, you know, you're not gonna be able to move them. And, uh, that, she also said that, you know, in her opinion, the insurance will cover them, not to worry. So, yeah.
Any other questions from the board? The board's pulse right now is, obviously, we wanna see it and take a look at what they are, what it's gonna involve as far as, you know, getting them moored, um, and make certain that we do have donations for one year's worth of, um, of, uh, insurance. Is anybody on the board adamantly opposed to this? Dave?
No.
Lori Beth?
No.
It's a great idea.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, Buffy. All right, moving on. Um, anybody else from the public wish to speak now? There will be an opportunity at the end of the meeting to do so as well. Seeing none, I'm gonna close public comment, and we are going to move on to the monthly department reports. All right, where's my? All right, one second. There we go. I'm sorry, give me one second. Okay, that's there. Good, that's there. All right, the treasurer's report. The Open Utility Bounces Report for the end of March reads as follows. Village water, sewer, garbage and penalties, a total of ninety-seven thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars and seventy-six cents. Town water and penalties, four hundred and seventeen thousand, eight hundred and twenty-six dollars and forty-seven cents, for a grand total of five hundred and fifteen thousand, two hundred and four dollars and twenty-three cents. Warrant number four in the amount of seven hundred and seventy-five thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars and eight cents. And the monthly revenues expenditure reports by fund are as follows. Our general fund revenue, one million, four hundred and twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars and twenty-four cents. Expenditures, three hundred and ninety-one thousand, one hundred and six, three hundred and ninety-one thousand, one hundred and sixty-eight dollars and seventy-four cents. Water fund revenue, four hundred and twenty thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars and thirty cents, with expenditures of two hundred and ninety-nine thousand, fifty-one dollars and ninety-five cents. And sewer funds revenues of seventy-nine thousand, four hundred and thirty-five dollars and ninety-seven cents, with expenditures of fifty-eight thousand, seventy-six dollars and eighty-two cents. This brings the grand total for receipts of one million, nine hundred and forty-three thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars, or twenty-two point three-nine-six-nine percent in anticipated revenues, and seven hundred and eighteen thousand, eight hundred and forty-four dollars and eighty-four cents, or eight point two-eight-two-one percent in anticipated expenditures through the end of December. The balance collected for sewer capital, six hundred and twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven dollars and fifty-eight cents through March thirty-first. Total taxes collected through March thirty-first, one million, three hundred thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars and eighty-three cents. Some notes. Ongoing training, um, uh, attended by Megan Gishwind, our deputy village clerk, who also works in the treasures department, and with, um, that's not Jean. That's.
Paula.
Oh, with Jean, I'm sorry.
Paula's training with Jean.
Got it. Ongoing training with Megan and Jean. Okay, okay, I got it. Um, Megan Gishwind and Paula, uh, Sebastian Howard attended the, GFOA stands for the?
Government Financers Office Association.
Governor Fi- Government Financial Officers Association meeting between April seventeenth and nineteenth of last week. That was Wednesday through Friday. Um, the ban, that's a bond anticipation note, was paid off on April nineteenth, finally, for the Black Rock Water Treatment Plant Rehab. And a budget line transfer for the police department, um, is, is going to take place. Yep. And night-class interest, as of our deposit at the first of the month, and today is April twenty-second, our interest on the eight hundred thousand dollars that the village invested with night-class, one thousand, seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars and ten cents in less than a month. Not bad. All right, let's move on to the building department. Trustee Carnwright.
Okay, report for March twenty-twenty-four, building department. Building permits issued, seven. Certificate of Compliance Occupancy issued, four. On-site inspections, eighteen. Violation, zero. Stop-work orders, zero. Municipal searches, two. Solar panels, zero. Fire inspections, one. Mini Carmona Code Enforcement Officer.
Sir, I got a quick question for you. Without, without naming an address, um, that one location that the prior tenant had a bunch of debris placed on the side of their house today, did we find out anything about the status of that dumped furniture?
Give me one there today, there's some photos. I'm gonna be sending a report of inspections over to you.
Excellent, okay, but, okay, all right. Um, yeah, and no excuse from them because with bulk pickup today, today would've been the day to just haul it fifty feet to the curb and have it picked up by the village, but. Absentee landlord, okay. All right, but we're gonna stay on that? Mr. Moore, we're gonna stay on top of that? Okay, all right, thank you. All right, any other trustees, any questions for the building inspector? Seeing none? Thank you, sir. Moving on to, what's the next one I got? Hold on a second. Fire, and who's got that? Fire is, is that you, Trustee Paleota? Yes, it is. Trustee Paleota, Storm King Engine number two.
March twenty-twenty-four summary. Fires, one. EMS calls, one. Motor vehicle accidents, two. False alarms, four. Drills, nine. Training session, seven. Apparatus in station maintenance, one. Meetings, two. Fundraisers, one. Total volunteer hours, three hundred and fifty-two point six. Total events, twenty-eight. Hmm. March's structure fire was a mutual aid call to the city of Newburgh. Tower ladder four thirteen was dispatched to standby at Newburgh's firehouse, but was directed to the scene before the truck left the firehouse. Our crew assessed the roof of an, of an exposure building to provide ventilation and operate a hose line. Uh, two candidates, James Moore and Christopher Baumhutter, have applied for membership in the fire department. They will be meeting with the Board of Fire Commissioners on April ninth. Three firefighter Gloria Marino has completed basic exterior firefighting operations and the first half of firefighter training. She had a perfect score on her final exam. She will be complete the course, she will complete the course on May fourth.
Um, Mr. Chair, did that meeting on April ninth with firefighter candidates, James Moore and Christopher Baumhutter, transpire?
Partially, there's a correction to number two, it's Christopher Baum.
Christopher Baum, so take out.
There was a typo.
Okay.
I apologize.
No worries.
We met with Mr. Moore.
All right.
Is that this Mr. Moore?
This would be this Mr. Moore.
Then only.
Congratulations and, all right.
And we have Mr. Baum scheduled for next month.
Excellent, okay. Any other questions from, um, trustees for the fire chief or the fire commissioner chair? All right, seeing none, we will move on to the next order of businesses of poli- I'm sorry. Yes, the police department, Trustee Brain.
Uh, Cornwall and Hudson Police Department, monthly police report, March first through thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four. There were four hundred and thirty total, total calls for service. There was one call for a felony burglary. Misdemeanors and violations, there was one call for trespass, one criminal mischief, one pedit larceny, one misdemeanor assault, two harassment or aggravated harassment. There were no arrests made in March. Vehicle and traffic, there were four property damage accidents, three traffic summonses issued, four traffic warnings issued, one parking summons issued, eight traffic enforcement posts, and two speed radar sign postings. Non-criminal activity, there were four fire response calls, one domestic incident, four alarm response calls, two noise complaints, five suspicious incident calls, three animal complaints. The departmental assists, the department assisted the town of Cornwall PD nine times, EMS seven. Uh, two, twice, other police agencies performed four welfare checks and one citizen's assist. Uh, the department requests a resolution from the board to enter into an inter-ministerial agreement with the county of Orange to participate in Orange County Stop DWI for twenty-twenty-four. During the month of March twenty-twenty-four, PO Thompson, Thompson and Capcheck both attended investigative interviewing training at the New York State Police Academy in Albany. During the month of March, Cornwall and Hudson PD received approximately three hundred and fifty dollars in grant funding from the NRA, the National Rifle Association. During the month of March twenty-twenty-four, Police Officer Dunworth attended Responding to Electrical and Gas Emergencies Training at the Orange County Fire Training Center in New Hampton. Respectfully, Chief Stephen E. Dixon.
Chief, anything to add?
Um, just within the last week, um, we received a grant award from the Department of Justice and Bureau of, uh, federal funding for, for four brand-new AED units, automatic external defibrillators. Bureau of Justice, excuse me, was the federal agency, uh, and DCJS. And that funding was for approximately fifty-eight hundred dollars.
Excellent.
And those will be used in the cars, uh, in the. And those will be used in the cars, in the vehicles, right?
Correct.
Yeah, the AEDs will be mobile.
So they don't have to be moved from vehicle to vehicle.
Right.
Correct.
That's great.
All right, anything else for the chief?
All right. What's the, uh, what's the disposition of the grants from the NRA? Three hundred and fifty dollars, not much, but what is the?
Yeah, um, I apply for that grant every year, and unfortunately, it's gone down dramatically. Um, but we typically will use that funding, that's for, um, training ammo, when we go to firearms qualifications.
Understood, thanks.
And that's just ball ammo, right?
Correct.
Okay, all right, all right, thank you, chief. Moving on to the Department of Public Works, sticking with, uh, the theme, that'd be you, trustee Brain.
Kedoo. Village of Cornwallon Hudson, Department of Public Works, March twenty twenty-three. Ninety-nine point six-five tons of trash collected for the month, sixteen point five tons of recycling collected for the month. Uh, yard waste had not yet begun at the time of the report, or for March, began in April. There was cold patching of potholes, service and repairs to village-owned vehicles, plowed and cleaned up from the one snowstorm we had this winter, as far as I recall. Uh, the MS four reporting date has changed, and the superintendent will advise when the report is complete. New carpeting was installed in the boardroom at Village Hall, I hope you're all enjoying it, it's very cushioned. Sewer backup on Blackwell Street on Sunday morning, um, not sure the date on that, but we'll get it. Um, the department began to repair damaged, uh, areas damaged by plowing, cleaned up at the Riverfront Park, and the boat docks have been rebuilt and ready to be put in place, and they are in place at this point, yep. And, um, okay, yeah, weekly yard waste pickup resumed on April first, and although it's not on the March report, everybody should be aware that today was bulk pickup day. Uh, and the notes here, spring bulk pickup is, uh, April twenty-second. New black bo- blacktop hot box has been delivered, this will be much more cost-effective method for pothole patching. David Halverson, Superintendent of Public Works.
Does the state have a blacktop hot box that they could possibly bring out to nine W and to two eighteen and handle the potholes?
I've seen it countless times on nine W.
Yeah, awful.
It's dangerous.
It is. All right, any, uh, Dave, anything to add?
Um, uh, from this morning, I entered into an agreement with Central Hudson for the repaving of Maple Road.
Oh, good.
From their construction, uh, it's gonna be full, full width, uh, milling and paving up there, and they're footing the entire bill on that project. Uh, we're still working on some of the other areas that we have to, uh, redo, redo, and just as the mayor and I were discussing this morning, uh, the cost of redoing roads and stuff, I did a little more research today, and one mile new construction road, two lane, in a rural area, you're talking two to three million dollars. Just so, you know, everybody thinks we need to tear, tear the existing roads out. We don't have that budget to do that.
Wasn't the chips just raised too?
Yeah, it was raised a small amount though, yeah, it was raised like, uh, wasn't it, wasn't it huge?
You just got the budget thing from.
I'm sorry?
The state raised the amount of money there.
The chips, are, are chips at fund? If, if it passes, we'll probably go up eight to ten thousand dollars?
I was just gonna say, 'cause I wanna say it's like five hundred plus million in the state's budget for it.
Including New York City.
Right, yeah, of, of course, okay.
We're close.
Um, Dave, I need you to wrap that USDA report up with Jason, because then I need it to go to Joe McKay.
We need, we need Joe to go ahead and look that over. Did you have it, Joe?
So Joe, so, no, he does not have a copy of it, so the copy you have is my only copy. So the USDA, United States Department of Agriculture, came out shortly after the July ninth, two thousand and twenty-three storm event where the village, in some areas, got devastated. Um, they have agreed to fund a couple of projects, it's a seventy-five, twenty-five split, and what they're looking for is for me to sign an agreement that this village board would be on the hook for the twenty-five percent. The town talked about it the other night, and, you know, Mr. Gabba weighed in on it, I just need you to take a look at it. I know we had fifteen days, although they've been extending that, but I do need to get that signed and get it back to them ASAP, so can we get that to Joe tomorrow?
I spoke to, uh, Jason this afternoon.
Okay.
And, uh, we, we were in agreement that, not that FEMA's a bad thing, but FEMA's a little slower-moving than.
That's been my experience, yeah, I would agree.
There's two projects that are with FEMA and USDA, and one that USDA's funding that FEMA wanted nothing to do with. Uh, so the, the two, the two projects are relatively small projects, but we think we can move forward much faster and get the work done this construction season.
Excellent. So if we can get that to Joe tomorrow, and even if it means bringing it up to the clerk's office, having it scanned in and sent to his office that way?
I may have a copy up front.
Okay.
I'll walk up when we're done here.
But I need to, 'cause I need to present that to the board after Joe says, yes, you're cleared hot to sign this, and get the board to agree to it, and then get that back there, 'cause nothing's gonna happen until, till we sign off saying that we're, we're, we're in concurrence with them with the, with the agreement.
Yeah, their, their, their project puts it back to pre-disaster construction, where sometimes FEMA you can get mitigation and add on to that. They're not gonna do that, but I think a smart move is to go, and Jason agrees.
Good.
Well, if this is going to be something that's needed before the next meeting, do you want to make a, a motion tonight to adopt a resolution to authorize the mayor to sign the agreement, subject to my review and approval?
Is the board comfortable with that?
Surely.
I mean, I could also do this tomorrow so that you'd be, you'd be in possession of the, of the report itself. I could have it scanned in and sent to the trustees, but essentially, it's three projects. One is the project on Boulevard, where the stream behind the Boulevard has become so filled with sediment, that, that is essentially a floodplain back there, and they would agree to come in and, and clean that section out, or pay to have that section cleaned. Dave, the other two projects, the other ones off Boulevard two, by mountain.
Mount, mountain, mountain road, the box culvert that we put in a few years back, uh, wing walls blew out, uh, just to replace them and fix the edge of the road, and gave me a basket up a little further.
Up at the top of the mountain, the houses that are right close to the, really too close to the mountain road, but when they were built, there were no code that says you can't have a house sit.
And those two projects are very close to each other.
To any of these projects, um, are they taking any land?
No.
No, these are.
They don't take any land?
No.
In the email that, uh, I saw, there was dollar amounts next to each of those three projects, that's the, is.
The, the three projects are upwards, uh, the funding is gonna be in a neighborhood, I think, of near four hundred thousand?
Yeah, four and change.
Yeah.
And remember, it's a, it's a seventy-five, twenty-five split, so by signing this agreement, we take on that responsibility for the twenty-five percent kick-in on that, so.
So that, those numbers are the seventy-five, seventy-five percent of what we believe the cost would be to do each of those projects?
Yes.
That works for me.
Okay, all right, is the, so, how do?
Well, I have a que- a question. So this, this first document that you're signing, is this the actual funding agreement, or is it, uh?
No, that.
We are for them to go forward.
We are going forward, this is not the funding agreement, it's like, is the village interested in us pursuing this? If you don't say yes, we're gonna move on.
All right, in, in that case, I expect that this agreement that we're gonna get from the USDA is essentially a contract of adhesion. I don't think we're gonna be able to call an attorney at the USDA and say, oh, I'd, I'd like to change a couple of words on page four.
No, I don't think that's gonna happen.
It's not, it's not gonna happen. If, if there's an error, yeah, maybe we can do that.
All right.
So it's, it's just completely up to the board, if there's a very, very short deadline, the board can act tonight, direct me to review the agreement.
All right.
Um, and does it need to be, was it fifteen days? Is that what you need to get in?
Yeah, it's fifteen days, but we're past that, it's, it's such an unreasonable suspense date on it, and we've talked to them, and they've said that you can take a little bit more time on it. I'd like to get it done this week, I'd like to have it back to them this week, so once Jason and Dave and Mike have taken a look at it, actually, Mike, there's no water projects on it, that's just FEMA, but after Dave and Jason looked at it, I just wanted you to review it and say, yep, it's okay.
Sure.
And just have the board say that they're agreeing that we would be on the hook for twenty-five percent of this.
Right, so there's only, only two ways to do it. One is that I look at it and you hold a special meeting to authorize you to sign it.
Okay.
Or you do it now, and.
Are you guys good with doing it now? Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion to direct council for the village, McKay, to, um, review the contract agreement with the United States Department of Agriculture, to set forth in motion an agreement to proceed forward with the village of Cornwallon Hudson, to have work completed. Go ahead, am I okay?
And for the board to authorize you to execute the agreement.
And the board to authorize me to execute said agreement.
Subject to the review of the document by the attorney for the village as to form and substance.
All right, may I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, good. All right, that, that just sped the process up, thank you. All right, anything else for, um, anything else on, Dave, we're still, I, I, I know you guys were out early this morning, I know a ton of, one man's garbage is another man's treasure, a number of bulk items have been removed already, are, will be done this week with that?
Uh, hopefully, it'll be done with the majority of the bulk cleanup tomorrow. Uh, most of it's been picked up today.
Yep.
Other than like, uh, metal, stuff like that, we leave that behind, people panic when they, 'cause we don't throw that in the garbage, we actually recycle that. We work with, uh, all recycling in Newburgh.
Okay.
So we get paid back for that, it's pittance, but.
Got it.
We don't pay to get rid of it.
Okay, all right, we got yard waste this week, we still got two garbage pickups this week, so all the usual things, plus bulk pickup.
Yeah, we're hoping to get yard waste picked up by Wednesday.
Okay, in case anybody says anything to you guys. Okay, anything else for the DPW superintendent?
And the engineer's work, I was on the phone with the engineer today too, and he's working with a asbestos abatement company that he had for another job to look at the project for Donahue Farm, so we can get that taken care of.
Excellent. What Dave is talking about, Dave and I met down at the Donahue Farm property today, whoa, with trustee Brain, well, trustee Brain came after, that's right, staggered, um, to look at, you know, the property, the, um, the expansion of the garden, which is ongoing down there, and to look at the barn and just see some of the work that's been done on that, the ice house, the shed. Um, the village had agreed with the Donahue Committee, or agreed to the Donahue Committee, that we would take down the kennel, it's the only building that needs to be razed, it's just untenable to imagine being able to use it for anything, it's in, it's in, it's in sad, sad state of disrepair, but we can't do anything to it until the sleeve of asbestos in the, or surrounding the old chimney has been removed by a, a asbestos abatement company. So Dave is in the process of getting that done, and then he has assured me, or at least gave me some hope, that we might be able to have this done by the.
Hope is not a plan.
Hope is not a plan. Um, the plan to have this done by the fall, to have our guys, we'll get a big excavator from, was it Blooming Grove? Or another, another, uh, community, borrow a big excavator and just take the buildings down and re- and return that area there to its original state as best as possible. So that's the plan. Okay, anything else for the DPW super? Nope, Water Department, trustee Carnwright.
Okay, March twenty twenty-four, monthly, uh, water report. Monthly production, twenty million nine hundred and eighty, uh, eighty-nine thousand gallons. Daily average, six hundred and seventy-seven thousand gallons. We collected twenty-eight samples in accordance with our approved water quality monitoring plan. Treatment, Argino Brothers have completed installation of the new sixteen-inch water main on Pex Road to the Black Rock Water Treatment Plant. All required pressure testing, water sample testing have been satisfactory completed. Transmission distribution, sixty-four utility markouts were completed, performed leak detection on mountain system, removed fire department from service on Continental Road, repaired pressure-reducing valves, Fontaine Drive, uh, water service line repair, mountain crest court, uh, damaged by Central Hudson contractor, um, and, uh, Shadane Circle, uh, reducing valve. Meters, red commercial meters, red residential water meters in town and village. Four final, uh, water meter readings were completed, seven residential water meters were replaced, twenty-two meter transmit, transmitters were replaced, four miscellaneous jobs completed, six water line inspections were completed. Other, staff attendant, Udig New York, uh, safety training, eight hundred and forty-two pounds of scrap metal recovered from water leak repairs and meter replacements were delivered to a local scrapyard for recycling for return of one thousand six hundred and seventy-two dollars and thirty-two cents. Completed spring property cleanup of facilities, installed new property identifier signs on facilities. Michael P. Trainer, Senior Water Department Superintendent. Thank you, Mike.
Chief, anything to add?
Uh, just since we'll be starting before the next meeting, we're gonna start hydrant flushing May first through the thirty-first, we're gonna do it a little bit different this year. We're gonna actually do fire flow testing of all the fire hydrants, so we can get flow data off of them. It's something that's recommended to be done every five years, and in my thirty-four years, I don't think we've ever done it, so may take us a little bit longer, but we're gonna get it done.
Excellent. Board, any questions for the water superintendent?
Uh, just to flag, the Donahue Committee is asked about, um, installation of a fire hydrant down there, I gather they had discussed it with you, and not to discuss it now, just to flag that they're still asking, uh, me, and I don't know, so.
Yeah, we spoke about that, and I told them that we'd have to get together with Dave, um, and we gotta find out what their site plan's gonna be, 'cause we certainly don't wanna run a water line or a, a water main where they may, down the road, wanna put a building or something.
Yep, okay.
I think, well, I think, yeah, I mean, obviously, it would be somewhere in the building envelope, because that's the, that's the portion that we'd want to protect, you know, if, God forbid, we had a fire down there, but, okay. Um, and I got an explanation for the, the trench that's being dug in front of the shed and the ice house, apparently they're gonna put some type of French drain, some type of, uh, um, drain there, so when the water comes off the front of the i- uh, the front of the shed, it doesn't just go underneath in the shed, but we have equipment, they have equipment, and they ultimately wanna turn that into usable space, so. All right, any other questions for the water super? None? All right, next, New Windsor Cornwall EMS. So I'm gonna do this report, so there were a total last month of four hundred and forty-four total dispatches with one hundred percent of calls covered, that's over one thousand four hundred EMS calls for the year. Two hundred and ninety-two patients transported, two hundred and forty-four responses in New Windsor, fifty-six within the town of Cornwall, and thirteen in the village of Cornwallon Hudson. The average response times were as follows: six minutes and thirty-three seconds in the town of New Windsor, five minutes and twenty-seven seconds in the town of Cornwall, and five minutes and fifty-four seconds into the village of Cornwallon Hudson. The Cornwall units covered nine calls in New Windsor, and New Windsor units covered four calls in the town of Cornwall and village of Cornwallon Hudson. All vehicles in service, three new volunteers have joined, no staff injuries to report, no issues, a new Tahoe was purchased to be used by deputy paramedics, replacing a two thousand and fifteen Tahoe, and New Windsor EMS responded to a major incident at, uh.
Airport.
Oh, Stewart, yeah, at Stewart Airport, and a search and rescue last week. All went very well. Um, chief Michael Big discussed with supervisor Bedetti, who's the supervisor in the town of New Windsor, the need for funding from Port Authority. Port Authority's requesting we assist with a large-scale drill in May. New Windsor Community Board member being discussed at next New Windsor EMS meeting, still need a Cornwall member. I can report that the supervisor and myself, along with the current Cornwall board member, town councilwoman Karen Edelman-Raez, we met with three candidates, they were all outstanding. Um, we made a decision and selected one, the supervisor is gonna announce that selection probably this week. Um, also, DASNY, that's the Dormitory Authority of the State of New York, grant funding were deposited, funds were deposited and used for new, uh, New Windsor EMS ambulance at the end of the year, and a surplus ambulance donated to us by Kovak was sold to Beacon EMS. This vehicle was sold on March twenty-fifth, then an audit of agency finances for two thousand and twenty-three has just begun. Updates to the Cornwall station are starting this month by the town of Cornwall, and two thousand and twenty-four New Windsor Fund Drive, um, communications were sent out, and the city of Newburgh now has dedicated EMS units, this will greatly reduce our responses into the city. And that is issued by chief Michael Big. Any questions from board members?
At the back, I think there was a couple of things on the back.
I didn't read everything, I just kinda picked, cherry-picked things, um, that's, I'm gonna leave that off. All right, um, any other questions?
Well, that's my favorite part, my favorite bullet point is, uh, that, uh, New. New Windsor EMS is gonna enter into partnership with Independent Living to move forward to integrate social workers into the EMS system for all three communities that they serve, be the first program like this in the area, and they've set a meeting to discuss further with local leaders.
That is, that is true, and that is a, that is a wonderful development, they're looking to create space at the One Clinton Street Address where Cornwall EMS is, to house said, uh, social worker at times to do office work and things like that, and then to be available at times to, to, to respond to calls where a social worker may be needed. Excellent, all right, I guess we're moving on now to Doris, without further ado, to resolutions, all right. So first resolution is stop DWI, the New York State Vehicle and Traffic Law Section one-one-nine-seven funds enforcement campaigns and agreement to participate, so the board needs to pass a resolution for that participation. So I'm gonna make an, I'm gonna make a motion to authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with the County of Orange to participate in the county's quote, stop DWI close quote enforcement initiative. Um, chief, anything to add on that? Hey, this is pro forma, we do it every year, all right, may I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next re- resolution, um, is a credit for a water account, I'm sorry, a sewer account, zero-zero-seven-four-one-nine-dash-zero-zero-zero, water account. Water and sewer, you're right, Dave, I'm sorry. I'd like to make a motion to approve a credit for account zero-zero-seven-four-one-nine-dash-zero-zero-zero, in the amount of, that amount is not right. No, can't, it can't be, um, do I have it here? No, it was more than that. Three.
Three fifty-one plus thirty-sixty.
You are correct, and I am wrong. I stand corrected, this is what happens when you tell the village clerk she's wrong. This is what happens, I'd like to apologize, and now I'm gonna read it as it is typed in and written here. So this credit for the account is in the amount of three hundred and eighty-two dollars and fifty-six cents for an overpayment that the homeowner made. May I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor? Aye, four ayes. All right, special event at the firehouse, I'd like to make a motion to approve a Cornwall and Hudson Elementary School teacher appreciation luncheon at, within the firehouse community room on May seventh, two thousand and twenty-four, Lori Beth, what are the hours of that event? Do you have an, a general idea?
Um, yes, I believe it was eleven to start setting up, um, and going until two-thirty, I believe.
Chief, that, is that all right, eleven to two-thirty is the luncheon time, okay. All right, may I have a second?
Second.
Um, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And as we go forward, we will continue to use a discerning eye anytime we end up leasing out fire department space, um, I think we can be exclusionary there, where we're not, we cannot be exclusionary in other properties, obviously because it is an active firehouse, and they have to work around, um, us having events there, but for a particular event like this, which is the Cornwall on Hudson Elementary School, which is located across the street from the firehouse, their PTO sponsoring a teacher appreciation dinner, teacher appreciation luncheon, we thought that this one kind of fit the bill for the right and appropriate type of event to have there, and Lori Beth Paleota, who's a trustee, but also the PTO president, will be the village employee there, and the assistant chief, Mike Trainer, has graciously agreed to be on site to represent the Firehouse Fire Company, all things fire, so. All right, next thing, Motivate Five K Race, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Motivate Five K, which will also use the village of Cornwall and Hudson's roads and the firehouse's main bay on September twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-four, is that a Saturday or a Sunday? That's a Sunday, yes, it's Sunday, um, they do this every year, I think this is.
Alzheimer's.
I think this is their second or third year doing this, I think it's their second year. Uh, may I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next event, a yoga event, which I will not be leading or participating in, because my body doesn't bend like a pretzel anymore, in fact, it never did. I'd like to make a motion to approve an International Yoga Day Celebration Day at Donahue Memorial Park on June twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-four, from two PM to six PM with a rain date of June twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four with the same times. This is all subject to an insurance.
She has it.
She's provided insurance and filled out the application and done all the things you need to do, okay. May I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. I'm guessing this is why you two gentlemen in the front row are here. This would be the auto- audiovisual permit for Nine Taft Place. You look like movie producers, is that, am I? You're not the yoga people, yeah, okay, all right, so, all right, so before I do, do this resolution, I have a couple of questions for you, so um, we obviously know where Nine Taft Place is, it's a, it's a beautiful property with, with mesmerizing views of the Hudson River north up toward the Newburgh Beacon Bridge and all the things, um. The board has not done too many of these, I think in the town, there have been more of these that have been done, but they're still kinda working through as far as what permit fees are, the time we've done this before, we've charged five hundred dollars per location. Now, in doing that, the last time this happened, because I was a member of the board at the time, it was for like, a camera guy, um, a showrunner, and, uh, and an audio guy, and that was it, and they did it inside somebody's home, so they came in one car, and we charged them five hundred dollars. Now, as I understand it, looking at your application, you have fifty or sixty people on set? And some, how many cars?
Um, it's more, what we bring with us is like a truck package, so it can vary, you know, seven to ten trucks, depending on the location.
Craft services?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
They're usually like a van or something like that.
All right, so, so here's my question, um, where, what, what would be the parking plan and, and as far as where you would put all this, I mean, I mean, obviously there are residents that live on that street, I mean, it is a tucked away dead-end street, but there are residents on that street, what would, what would, what are you offering as far as where you're gonna put your, your setup?
Yeah, so we were kinda going back and forth on this a little bit, typically for all of our trucks and our trailers and everything that we bring somewhere, uh, we find what's called a base camp for that, uh, we were actually looking across the street and talking to three forty Hudson, uh, Saint Mary Anne, I believe, um, right across the way here, to see if we might be able to.
Saint Thomas Church.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yep, no worries.
Well, they're actually, they actually changed it to Saint Mary Anne Coe, but it was, we referred to it as Saint Thomas.
Really? Where did that?
He had it right.
Uh, two or three years ago when they consolidated parishes, so, yeah, it is, it's actually the parish of Saint, Saint Mary Anne Coe, yeah, so you're talking to, so you've had, so you spoke to Father Reese across the street about that?
You have a smile on your face.
Well, I'm just saying, do you, if you, you got into.
Personally, one of our colleagues did, so I'm very curious.
I got it, and what you would do is you would look for a place, a lot to, to park your equipment in, and then shuttle people back and forth, because obviously that neighborhood, I mean, it's, I've been on TV sets before, and knowing the amount of vehicles that you have in and everything, it would just, it would completely shut that street down.
It's, yeah, exactly, and I mean, we, we essentially, we're not one of the, in our consideration, we're not one of like the huge jobs, we're a little bit smaller, uh, than some of the other things you might see around, but, and we could, we could fit a decent amount on the road, but it, it's more of like, we, we try to avoid that as much as possible, because we have to go and get permission from everybody and make sure we're not annoying everybody.
Of course.
You know, getting on the same page and making it comfortable for us to be a guest there, um, you know, we would try to keep things like, there's a camera truck, which I believe is like a forty-foot box truck, uh, there's, there's an electrical truck that has some equipment on there, um, there's a few just equipment trucks that we try to keep close and give them priority at every filming set that we go to.
Sure, is this, are these gonna be all interior shots, exterior, or both?
It's a little bit of both, but the exterior is exclusively in the backyard of the property.
Got it.
So.
You'd be doing that from the patio area or from down below?
Uh, we're doing it from kinda the patio area, and we're gonna, uh, have a camera down below looking up, it's like a proposal, it's a romantic comedy that we're filming.
A rom-com?
Yeah.
In Cornwall and Hudson?
Yeah.
All right.
You need any extras? We've got some here.
Okay, um, now, my understanding is that you have two locations, you have another location at the Storm King School.
Correct, yes.
Okay, now have you coordinated this with the Storm King School themselves?
We have it, yes.
And what was their level of approval or commitment?
They are, as they will have been before, uh, this is actually our second time working with them, different project, of course, but, uh, we're using the same exact arrangement that we had before, where we fit our entire footprint, maybe excluding a few trucks, which we might have to find another lot for, but we are able to contain all of crew parking, equipment trucks, uh, catering, craft service, all of it within the buildings and, and their camp.
So this is the same production, but two separate scenes in two separate locations, am I correct? Are they gonna be filmed simultaneously?
No.
Okay, so you'll do one and then go to the other?
Yeah, it's, uh.
Put on two separate dates, so.
Oh, two separate dates, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
One and twenty-two.
On, uh, May thirteenth, which is a Monday.
Got it.
And May twenty-second.
And May twenty-second, got it, okay.
We just wanna get them both in, like, we, we know, like, we're already kinda under on the.
Got it, um, obviously you have, you've done this a few times, it looks like, you, you, you have all the appropriate insurance and all the things you need to, to do this. Um, is the Storm King School charging you any fee to film there?
They are, yes.
Okay.
Uh, they have a day rate, and then we have crafting and strike rates, all under their own personal, uh, events.
Do you have a non-disclosure with them, or do you, or can you say what the rate is that you're being charged by that? I'm not looking to double gouge you, but if you're in two different locations in the village, we would charge two separate fees for that. But if they're charging you on the property, I wanna know what they're charging, so I'm not, I'm not trying to hurt you, I'm sure you've, you've done this before and experienced this before, I'm not looking to, to double tax you for doing the same thing, but.
Uh, I'm actually not too sure what their disposition would be.
Got it.
The rates, uh, I could say it's, it's less than five thousand dollars for a shoot day, it's more than two thousand dollars.
So it's between two and five?
Yes, and that's definitely the average, and, and that'll go from like a prep or strike day, as we call them, the preparation or restoration of the space or the set.
Right.
The site.
Right.
Film days are higher elevated, right, closer to that high.
All right, so here's what I'm, I'm gonna ask the board, um, the one time that we've approved this that I've been around, and this is, uh, this is my fifth year on the board, it was five hundred dollars, but I just described the production, it was one vehicle, and, you know, a guy with a camcorder, another audio guy, and and a production assistant, and they had an actor or two inside of a, inside of a home here, and we charged five hundred dollars for production of this size. Um, we haven't had to deal with the fee structure and what we should be charging, but what are your thoughts?
I mean, it's really just, uh, I mean, essentially, from your description, it sounds like it would be roads impeded temporarily, would be the primary impact to the village, and the presence of how many, thirteen trucks or something you said, just the presence of large trucks in the village beyond what we usually have, is kinda the idea.
It's also, it's hard to say if we will be, uh, impeding traffic, because we will be using private, um, lots for the most part for the trucks.
Yeah.
So you pack out and then move the trucks to store the trucks, but you have the camera truck and the lighting truck are priority nearby, but not necessarily blocking the street.
We, we, we do resident letters, and we collaborate with them, and it would be.
Oh, good. And, and if we do agree to move forward on this, I would like to meet with you two at some point in time to discuss a, a parking plan, to say, hey, where are you gonna put it, and, and it may be an opportunity where I can help you, because I know people that you could talk to, or what would work in that, because again, the worst thing that happens is you're, you're trying to do a good thing, and you, and you block Mrs. McGillicuddy's house, and she comes out, she's ninety-four years old with two arthritic hips, and she is furious, because, you know, she can't get out to get to the grocery store, so we can, if we do this in advance and notify the right people, and have a decent parking plan, because you're gonna have a lot of vehicles, um, that would be the way to help us get the yes on it.
Can I ask, um, is there any security concerns, or, um?
Um, I would say not necessarily with us.
Do you have onset security with your, I mean, are, are these A-list, B-list actors, are they, is it a, I mean?
You wouldn't, you maybe wouldn't wanna describe the actors in public, I would imagine, in terms of their A, B, C status.
Well, that's true, too.
Familiar with the names, for sure.
Okay.
Uh, it's, we don't have top crews, I'm sorry, uh, but, you know, we familiar names with romantic comedies.
Got it, but do you have onset security for that, for people like that?
Typically not.
No, okay.
Depending on where we go, but no.
Got it.
We just kind of, others, you know, we have got a lot of people with us, so.
Got it.
Very case by case.
We, we don't have too many security concerns.
So, so.
What are they doing in Cornwall?
Yeah. We're in Newburgh sometimes, but, yeah.
Gotcha, so, so, so my thing, like I said, is because we have not had a, a lot of experience with doing this, and it's a wonderful opportunity, and it, you're gonna get some, some amazing scenery here, because this is the place we live, and it's an amazing place, but it's, it's, I'm looking at it from, we don't have a tier structure, like I said, if you have one car, and I go, I'm charging you five hundred dollars, do I charge a production the size of yours the same amount, so, but I'm also not looking to gouge you either, because we think it's a good thing that you're here and doing this, and it brings, you know, it brings positive light on our village, so that's, that's another thing, too, so.
And maybe at some point, if we do have a meeting to talk about the planning and everything, we can give you a comparison of what other municipalities provide us.
Perfect, all right, so, 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 so will the board, will the board, can I, can I do a resolution for subject to my meeting with the producer, you guys are both producers?
No, we work in the locations department.
Locations department, all right, yeah, yeah, meeting with them, discussing a parking plan, looking at a fee rate, and coming up with one, and then bringing that back to the board and having the board approve it.
Well, when, when do you need the permit approved, so you can take care of what you need to do on that, those dates? Um. Because the board doesn't meet again for a mon- a month, unless again, you did have the works, yeah, right, exactly, same, same issue.
We can approve the concept.
But we can approve the concept so long as we can meet on a, on a fee that you think is, you know.
We can iron out the details.
We can iron out the details, but I can get the board to approve this in concept moving forward, so that they can at least put it on the calendar, subject to subject to an agreement on rate and, and an approved parking plan. Is that fair?
Second.
All right, may I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so, um.
I do have, so, I'm sorry, excuse me, I just have one, I did review, for the board's benefit and these gentlemen, I did review, uh, the, uh, application form, and they have provided the correct insurance, which just goes to show that if anybody actually reads the form, they can provide the right insurance, thank you very much. Um, the application form to me just needs to, it was signed, but I'd just like to see on the application form, the name of the person that signed it, printed under their name, and their title at the company. I think I know who it is based upon other things in the application, but the right person has to sign it, so that the insurance is in effect, so that's, that's the only thing I need. The name printed under the signature line with the title of the person, the person's title and the company.
Okay.
And then, and then I'm good.
All right, so, do we, do we take a vote on that?
We did vote on that.
We voted on that and said yes, okay, so you two gentlemen, um, are going to get on my calendar, come see me, you can reach out, um, almost here seven days a week, but you just make sure that I'm here, so we can meet, and we'll flesh all this out, and then I'll bring it back to the board, but we'll discuss rate, and we'll discuss, um, how we can make this work logistically, but there's obviously a way to get the yes on this, and the board approved it, so long as we can get an agreement on the fee rate and on, uh, a parking plan. Does that sound good?
Yeah, thank you for spending this much time on that.
No worries, you're welcome to stick around for more Root Canal with No Novocain, or you're, you can, you're allowed to leave if you'd like to, so it's up to you, but just, uh, just give us a shout here, and you can, if I'm not here, they know how to get me, and I'll come back and meet with you, okay? So just let me know when you guys are available, and I'll meet with you. Obviously, this week makes sense, so we can get this thing going. Okay, I'm around all week.
Okay, we'll be in touch tomorrow.
Sounds good, all right, thank you, gentlemen.
Have a good rest of your night.
Good night, thanks.
You too. All right, next item, moving on on the resolution, is the transfer of funds to the police line for a scanner purchase, so we're gonna be moving money from the contingency line to the police line. I'm gonna make a motion to move one thousand dollars from Alpha one-nine-nine-zero-point-four, the contingency line, to Alpha three-one-two-zero-point-four police expenses for the purchase of a scanner for the police department, may I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We obviously talked about this at the work session, and everybody knows what we're doing. All right. Next item, okay, so I'm in for this, I'm gonna need the code, so, all right. Okay, so, the next item is to set a public hearing for a local animal control law. All right, so the village has a code, section sixty-nine dash five, related to animal control. The animal control chapter is bigger than that, has more sections, but on restrictions, and it tells you what your animals are allowed to do and not do, uh, as, as an example, if your animal engages in habitual loud barking, or howling, or to conduct itself in such a manner as to produce an unreasonable noise, or noise of a type or volume that a reasonable person under the circumstances would find offensive, you are in violation of village code section sixty-nine dash five subsection two, three. Okay, different things here about dog bites, if a dog chases a person, jumps upon a person, harasses a person. Okay, different things here about dog bites, if a dog chases a person, jumps upon a person, harasses a person, causes anything intimidation, whether they're leashed or otherwise, or to put such a person in reasonable apprehension of serious physical injury. So it gives rules here, if your dog kills another dog, bites a human being, what the rules are. A number of years ago, the village board, um, added a section to our village code, um, that requires people with pit bulls to have a sign on their residence. Now, I think this happened somewhere in two thousand and nine or two thousand and ten, somewhere in that, in that timeframe. I had moved into the village in two thousand and four, I had two, two pit bull puppies that I'd rescued and had them. And the village decided to pass an update to the code, which is section C. Section C states, persons or business entities harboring a pit bull must post on all gates and entrances to the property and post in other conspicuous places signs which specifically state as follows, quote, warning, pit bull on premises, close quote. Failure to comply with this subsection shall be a violation of this chapter. Now, just sitting in my office today, um, and looking out on Hudson Street, we have, people are starting to walk, the weather's getting nicer. Four different pit bulls and pit bull mixes were walked on leashes. Some of them I recognize because they're the usual walkers, mothers walking their kids to school, or people just walking their dogs in the afternoon. Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, but I do not think, since this became a, a part of our code, I don't think the village has ever policed this. Um, I have neighbors on my street on Wood Avenue that have pit bulls that don't have their signs. I certainly don't, I'm in violation, and I don't think we've ever, ever policed this matter. It's, it's, it's the way it is now, with more people moving into the village, um, I'm seeing more and more of these dogs. So what we would like to do is to set a public hearing for a local animal control law to potentially change that section from the code. So I am gonna make a motion to schedule this public hearing on an introductory local law to amend Village Code, Chapter sixty-nine, entitled Animal Control as follows. Whereas the village board believes that it is necessary to amend Chapter sixty-nine of the Village Code, entitled, quote, Animal Control, close quote. And whereas the village board wishes to set a time and place for a public hearing on an introductory local law to amend to Chapter sixty-nine, now therefore, it is hereby resolved that the village here, the village board hereby determines that it will be the lead agency with respect to the review of the proposed local law, hereafter referred to as the, quote, project, close quote, in accord with New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, or SECR, and Part six one seven of the regulations implementing SECR, since there are no other agencies that have the authority to approve the project, and let it be further resolved that the village board hereby classifies the action as an unlisted action under SECR, and let it be further resolved that a public hearing will be held by the village board in order to receive comments and suggestions regarding the proposed local law concerning animal control, and to receive any comments concerning the potential adverse environmental impacts of the proposed legislation in accord with SECR on May twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four, at seven P M. at the village hall, located at three twenty-five Hudson Street, Cornwall Hudson, New York. And it is further resolved that the village clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause said public notice of said hearing to be given as provided by law. So, um, that is to set the public hearing, allow the public to have a chance to weigh in on their, on their views on this, which is why I gave a little bit more of a backdrop, a little more color and context to the situation than just simply reading the resolution. So with that said, may I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on setting the public hearing for May twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four, at seven P M.? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, moving on to the next item of business, the updated special events fee schedule. The village board, um, has agonized over this, has debated it, has discussed it, has talked about it, has done all the things in trying to get to a good number for what we're charging residents to lease village property and facilities. One of the things that the village board did is decided to separate, instead of village users versus everyone else, we separated into three separate categories, village, then town, and then everyone else. And it's a, it's a, it's a graduated scale. So village residents are gonna pay the least amount for everything available to them in the village. Town residents are gonna pay a small markup. Well, why is that? Why do they have to pay more? Come on, this is Cornwall. Well, because it's our village tax dollars that go toward our police department, our D P W for cleanup, all the things, so, and we have the liability. So that's the reason why there's a small markup, and then there's a bigger markup for people out of town, not village residents and not town residents. So, um, we have discussed this, the paper ran a, uh, an article on it and outlined all the fees and the fee schedule, and so that's what we're gonna take a vote on tonight. So I'm gonna make a motion, um, that we approve the updated special event fee schedule, a copy of which will be annexed to these minutes. May I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion?
Uh, just question on line seven, use of shelter in lawn areas, should that read more than fifty people slash eleven to nineteen cars? Or is it still less than?
I think we're keeping it less.
Okay, but just a higher number of cars.
If somebody came to us and said sixty people, that's something the board could consider, but generally speaking, we are looking at keeping it at less, yeah.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
My only question.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, moving on to the Hasbrook Avenue Water Main, designed by Pintagaro and Deutsch Engineers, that is the engineer firm for the village. I'm gonna make a motion to accept the March fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, excuse me, proposal of Pintagaro and Deutsch Engineers for the village to prepare a design for the Hasbrook Avenue Water Main Replacement Project, and to obtain approval for the project by the Orange County Department of Health in the amount of thirty-eight thousand, two hundred dollars, and to authorize, um, and to authorize the mayor to execute the proposal and such other and further documents as may be necessary for completion of the project. May I have a second?
Second.
Mike, anything to add on that? I mean, we've talked about it at the work session, but anything you wanna add, any update?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, any, uh, any further discussion from the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on, alright, advise Orange County Department, uh, of Personnel as to the permanent status of a village water department employee. So when employees are hired by this village, when a candidate or applicant is hired, they are subject to a probationary period. That probationary period can be anywhere from six months, I think the longest I've seen is eighteen months, and generally speaking, they're around a year. So in this instance, Daniel Demetrov, a village water maintenance worker, has completed his one year of probationary employment today, and has becoming a permanent village employee. So I'd like to make the motion to authorize and direct the village treasurer and/or the deputy village clerk to notify the Orange County Department of Personnel that Mr. Demetrov has completed his probationary term and is now a permanent village employee. May I have a second? Mike, anything to add on Mr. Demetrov?
No, he's a very much a valued member of the department. He came to the department with some experience in this field of work, which is always difficult to find, so, um, he's fitting in really well.
Outstanding, alright, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, next item, water department purchase of an enclosed landscape trailer. I'd like to make a motion to authorize the purchase, to the purchase of an enclosed landscape trailer model, Y is in Yankee, one zero two one six, L is in Lima, H is in Hotel, D is in Delta, dash T is in Tango, A is in Alpha, dash one hundred, for the total sum of seventeen thousand, five hundred and sixty-six dollars and zero cents. May I have a second?
Second.
Mike, anything to add? We just, board, any further discussion?
Just, uh, we've kept this stuff, uh, materials in, um, how have they been stored thus far?
They're stored inside our small storage building down below at the D P W yard. Um, as you all know, we have over a hundred acres of watershed, you know, land that we have to maintain. It just makes it a little bit easier to keep everything condensed in one location, so when we go out to do property maintenance, we simply hook up to the trailer and go.
Makes perfect sense. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, next item, attendance at the New York Rural Water Association Conference. I'd like to make a motion to approve attendance at the New York Rural Water Association Conference by water maintenance leader Daniel Nye, assistant leader Richard Smith, and water superintendent Michael Traynor. Mike, is that between May tenth and the twenty-second?
It's May twentieth and the twenty-second.
Okay, so from May twentieth to the twenty-second, I'm assuming the twentieth is a travel day, twenty-second's a travel day?
Uh, well, we have classes both days, just the twentieth, they start in the afternoon.
Travel on the.
Travel in the morning.
And then.
Come back in the afternoon on Wednesday.
Okay, may I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, entering into.
Just to confirm, that's to accept our award as the number one, uh, rural water system in the state of New York?
Correct, and also to get some training in as well.
Keep our head down and be humble, even though we are the best in the New York.
I'm not in the water department.
So you're allowed to brag.
I can crow.
Alright, next item, enter into a water services and escrow agreement with two girls, one boy, Holdings LLC. Um, this is the company that owns the Main Street Hotel Project, which is, for us old timers, the Bernicker property.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me.
Sir.
Hi, um, I already have reviewed the agreement. The resolution, the way it's drafted right now, is subject to my review and approval, but I have reviewed it, so I do approve it. There are a couple of words here and there that I'll work with Mike on, but it, it's acceptable.
Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion to allow me, the mayor, to enter into a water services and escrow agreement with two girls and one boy LLC, it, having been reviewed and approved with minor tweaks, um, of the same by our council. Um, council for the village, uh, may I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion, any other questions?
Yeah, we're, um, is all of this subject to that, um, project going forward? Is it subject to New York Forward money? Is it, is it gonna happen regardless?
I, I don't, yeah, I.
It, you know, that, that's up in the air right now, but they're, they are putting in, uh, they're supplying some middles to our department for our engineers to review.
I got it, so this is preliminary.
Correct.
Yeah.
It's, obviously, they're not gonna make any changes to the water system unless it gets approved by the town.
So, Mike, is that, is that building gonna require a whole new water and sewer both?
I can't speak to the sewer, but it will need a whole new water line. Currently is fed off of a three-quarter inch water line, and they need to put in at least a six-inch water main to supply the sprinkler system as well as their domestic use.
Okay, thank you.
And I haven't followed it too closely, but I do believe that they did get a grant through the town. Uh, town applied for a grant, which they did get, which I wanna say was close to a million dollars. One point two million, I believe, but don't quote me, because I can't remember entirely what the amount of their ask was from New York Forward, but I believe it was in the.
It's like one point five, isn't it?
It was, it was, it was substantial, somewhere, somewhere north of a million dollars. Um, so, um, yeah, I mean, what we're doing right now is just preliminary stuff that, that we're required to do as an involved agency.
Correct.
That's it. Okay, um, did I take a vote on that?
No.
No, alright, then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're approving both, correct, the escrow and the water service agreement.
Joe, is that correct? We're approving the escrow.
We're approving both, escrow and water service agreements.
Yeah, and I thought that was the wording of the agreement. The, the text, the text that I have says to approve, allow the mayor to authorize the escrow agreement and the water service agreement.
Okay, next item is the second public hearing that the board is setting or seeking to set for, um, May twentieth. And before I read that, I'll give you a little preamble, because I know it always makes Joe's hair turn on fire. So under section one sixty-five dash six of the Cornwall Hudson Village Code, Regarding Usage Charges, there are three simple lines. The first one says, the charges for village water shall be established by the village board. Second line, the charges for customers outside the village of Cornwall Hudson shall be eighty percent higher than those charged within the village. So everybody outside of the village, that includes the town and everyone else. And then the last line, the Board of Trustees may by resolution establish additional categories of charges or fees associated with the use of the water, the village water system. These charges or fees shall be deemed usage charges for purposes of this chapter. Okay, so in regards to this public hearing, what the board is looking to do is to take out the second line, subsection B, that says the charges for customers outside the village of Cornwall Hudson shall be eighty percent higher than those charged within the village. Why? Because we began doing this September third of nineteen seventy-four, when Doc Donahue was the mayor, and by a five-o board vote, we decided to charge everyone outside of the village plus eighty percent. So during Mayor Moulton, who was the mayor from nineteen eighty-one until two thousand and seven, twenty-six years, he lowered it, and this is by percentages, but he lowered it from eighty percent differential to, in nineteen eighty-six, seventy-nine percent, where it remained at seventy-nine percent through the rest of his mayoralty. So one percent less than what Village Code requires. We don't know the reasons. We've looked up the minutes, we've tried to figure out why, by trying to, you know, reverse engineer it, we don't understand, know the reasons. In two thousand and four, alright, so in two thousand and four, um, this would have been, uh, still under Mayor Moulton, the rates for outside consumers of the village of Cornwall Hudson were dropped from seventy-nine percent to seventy percent higher than the village rate. And it stayed at seventy percent through the rest of Mayor Moulton's term, through the four years of the boards that were, that were helmed by Mayor Gross, until two thousand and seventeen. And under Mayor Coin, the village outside rate went from seventy percent above the village rate for outside users to fifty-two percent. And then in two thousand and eighteen, that same board changed it from fifty-two percent to only thirty-six percent. Sometimes they did this by lowering the town rates, most often they did it by raising the village water rates to close the gap. Then, the final one was done in July of two thousand and nineteen, during Mayor Coin's term, where the rate was dropped to thirty-three percent. So in looking at this, from nineteen eighty-six until today, as we sit here, we are not following Village Code, which says it has to be plus eighty percent for everybody that does not live or own a business within the village of Cornwall Hudson. What I'm seeking to do is to remove that line, because the first line says everything. The charges for the village water shall be established by the village board. And then the, in the third line, the Village Board of Trustees may by resolution establish different categories for charges or fees associated with the use of our village water system. So that's what, in a sum and substance, the purpose of this public hearing will be, to see if people have any weigh-ins on that, but that's what the board is seeking to do. Alright, without further ado, resolution is to set a time and place for a public hearing on an introductory local law to amend Chapter one sixty-five of the Village Code, entitled Water. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to set the public hearing, whereas the village board believes that it is necessary to remember, to amend Chapter one six five of the Village Code, entitled Water, to amend usage charges, and whereas the village board wishes to set a time and place for a public hearing on an introductory local law to amend Chapter one six five. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved, the village board hereby determines it will be the lead agency with respect to the review of the proposed local law, hereafter referred to as the project, in accord with the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, or SECR, in Part six one seven of the regulations implementing SECR, since there are no other agencies that have the authority to approve the project, and let it be further resolved, the village board hereby classifies the action as an unlisted action under SECR, and let it be further resolved that a public hearing be held by the village board in order to receive comments and suggestions regarding the proposed local law concerning water charges, and to receive any comments concerning the potential adverse environmental impacts of the proposed legislation in accord with SECR on May twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four, at seven P M. We should probably set this for seven fifteen, because wasn't the other one set for seven? Alright. Yeah.
That's fine, sometimes you just set it at seven, seven oh one.
Okay, let's set this at seven oh one then, so it's just a different time, okay. At the village hall located three two five Hudson Street, Cornwall Hudson, New York, one two five two zero, and as further resolved, the village clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause said public notice of said hearing to be given as provided by law. May I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, and there's no secret that the village board has been looking for the last two years with the establishment of a water committee, where we have members of the town and the village on that committee, and it's chaired by the water superintendent, looking at the setting of water rates, what's fair for the village, what's fair for the town, what's fair for outside users of the village and the town, as well as potential water sales and things like that. So this is just. So this is just one step along the way to setting what we feel like are fair and just rates for village residents and town residents. All right. With that, Pelley can do that. Okay. Um, one of the things that we pushed off, that we've talked about on and off at a number of these meetings, is our building fees. I had the building inspector do a deep dive into our building fees to look at them in comparison with the towns and with some other surrounding communities. Why are we charging significantly less for some things than they are? Why are we charging significantly more for such, uh, something?
Other things.
For other things. And so the village, uh, building inspector has done that for me, has given a report to each of the trustees, which I've asked them to look at. We are going to do a deep roll, deep dive, roll your sleeves up into this, um, at the work session in May. Um, we had some conversations today, and Manny, you pointed some things out to me, a couple of numbers, right? And one of the numbers that you pointed out was, the building department on average, in an average year, brings in approximately how many dollars into the village coffers?
Seventy to a hundred thousand.
Seventy to a hundred thousand dollars. What does it cost for us to operate our building department right now? Sorry. Seventy.
Basically, a year will be a hundred and fourteen thousand.
So it's costing us a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars to run a building department, and it doesn't necessarily have to be, you know, net neutral. However, we are bringing in, in some years, around seventy thousand dollars or seventy-plus thousand dollars. And that's for everything, for all the fees that we charge, for new builds, for renovations, for decks, for fences, for inspections, for COs, all the things. Right. All right. And as you explained, as explained to me a number of times, when you come up with your numbers, what are you basing your numbers on for things like, say, square footage? Somebody wants to do a new build or a renovation, and you, and you come up and you say, Jimmy, it should be this number for this, for square foot. How do you come up with that number? What, what are you using as a bible or guide?
I use a formula that was created for the International Coal Council, uh, which they use, the, uh, the, uh, square footage, the cost of construction for a square footage na- nation-wide. And they come up with a number, depending on the type of construction, uh, the type of occupancy, several factors that they put into place, and this is, as I said, this is how much it goes for a square foot to build that building. Then we'll take that number, we calculate how much money, uh, was invested in the buildings in cost of construction for the previous year, and then we can divide that amount and come up with a, with a multiplier. And that's what will give us a, an accurate fee schedule, depending on the work being done.
All right. So you don't pull these numbers out of thin air?
No, it's a very, actually, a very complicated formula.
It's a complicated, it's a...
It takes a lot of reading, it takes a lot of numbers. Uh, we gotta, we gotta keep track of every single per minute that comes into the whole year. How much is the cost of construction, exactly what's being done, to be able to calculate an accurate number on the following?
In other municipalities that you have worked in, um, is the revenue that's generated by the building department, does it generally pay for the building department, or is there a difference? Is there an imbalance?
It's an imbalance, uh, you know, definitely, you know, from municipality to municipality. The one that I have worked in, they really don't look at it this way until I got there. Pretty much, I'm the one who has started it, using that formula just to create a balance and a fair fee schedule to all, whether you're doing major construction or you're doing a small, little addition on your house. Uh, I, I, my personal opinion is that you, you should pay according to what you're doing. Uh, not, you know, because this one has a bigger project, more money, let's get more money from that. This person has little money, let's get a little money from that. It works out that way anyway at the end, but in a, in a fair way of calculating that thing.
Okay.
The most municipalities that I have worked in the past, when I got there, nobody knew where the fee came from. This is what we've been charging, and that's it.
Yeah. That seems to be the way things are. Why are you charging this per square footage? Well, it's just always been that way. Okay. So I asked you to conduct a review of them, you, and then I asked you to highlight the ones where you thought the village was charging too much. Are there some that we can adjust? And you did take a look at it, and you did provide them. And we've been doing this going back and forth for over a year, right? So I've asked the board to take a look at it. You're going to review that again, and then at the work session meeting, we're going to make a determination on the recommendations you had, where we should make some adjustments. I don't think you adjusted any of them north, did you? I think they were all adjusted south.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I'm going to ask the board again to take a look at that, um, and then we will do a deep dive into this at the work session in, uh, in May. Any, any questions on that and what I'm looking to do here? Because we've been kicking this can down the road for a long time as far as trying to get this thing approved, and we keep putting it in abeyance until we figure out what the right numbers are, and getting to those right numbers has been a long slog, but we're gonna, we're gonna get there. Okay. All right. That's that. Um, one other item of interest, it's not on the agenda, but I, I know that there are a number, and interestingly enough, tonight in the town, I bumped into Mr. Kershner, who has been one of the outspoken and vocal, um, you know, proponents of, of doing something for River Avenue to slow the rate of speed down. And the village has done a number of things, from taking away parking spaces, um, to painting large block letters, stop, to moving a stop sign, to putting new reflective devices on the stop sign, um, to sending police patrols out. The village and this village board have, I've been out there, how many times, Dave, have you and I walked it looking for solutions to what we can do to help the residents out there? Their houses, especially up at the top, but even around the bend, are very close to the roadway. And when people drive down or drive up it at high rates of speed, um, the residents are rightly concerned about that, including the fact at the top of the hill, where river runs into Idlewild and Hudson, there's a crosswalk there that is used when school is about to open and after school is closed for the day by young kids and parents. Um, a group of parents, um, filled out a, formed a petition group. One of them came to talk to us, and this board agreed to hire a second crossing guard for the top of River Avenue for an hour in the morning for school, before school starts, and an hour in the afternoon when school lets out, to, um, to have somebody up there to try to, um, make it more safe for our children. Now, Dave, you gave me something this morning, and I did a little research on it. So Dave mentioned to me this morning, one of the things that the residents there wanted was for us to lower the speed limit. Well, everybody on every block wants that, right? You, you, I'd rather make the speed limit on Wood Avenue five miles per hour. That'll satisfy my wife and everyone else on the block. But the, the practicality of that is, it just doesn't, it doesn't work that way. And there are, to do it, to go through New York State to do it, you have to have a really pressing reason for that, and they will not let you lower it below their minimum required speed limit. So on River, it's twenty-five. So Dave noticed that in the budget this year, the governor made mention that, um, they will be allowing New York, and Dave, here's the kicker. I don't know if this includes all of New York State. Everything I looked up online, it says, and I'll read it. "Drivers across all five boroughs will have to change how fast they drive. New York will be allowed to set speed limits and lower them from twenty-five miles per hour to twenty miles per hour." Governor Kathy Hochul announced that Sammy's Law, named after a child who was run over in New York City and killed by a speeding car, will be passed in the upcoming state budget. Quote, "He was killed in front of our apartment building, we have a crisis on our roads," um, said, says one of the advocates for this. But as I read through this, everything in here says it's New York City. Yeah. So what you're suggesting is that the budget does say that it is... Maybe I should put my investigator on this. You, you familiar with this? All right. So we are going to look into this, and if that is an option, and that is included in the budget, I will bring it back before the village board to consider reducing the speed on River Avenue. Now, understanding that we do it for one, it opens the floodgates up for everybody, but I think an argument can be made that River Avenue, there are a number of reasons, the proximity to the school, the dangerous curves, the history of speeding, the fact that it is a major ingress road into an, an egress road out of the village. I think there's a lot of reasons that we could make the argument that it would fit that. But Dave, you're, you're pretty certain that it is New York State. See, I, Albany does a lot of carve-out things for New York City, so I'm just... Yeah. Okay. Well, I'll look, I, I will, I'll continue to look that up. But I just want to make everybody aware of that fact, that if that is a possibility and is part of the budget, we will explore it on this board. Okay. I think that's, oh, the permit app.
Joe, had you looked at the special event permit, permit to application?
I need, no.
Okay, that's fine. All right. So, so Jim Kane has looked at it, you're going to look at it. Our application for, um, permit for the village for, for special, uh, the special... Special events permit. You're just going to give us the bless off and saying that we can use this?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So we'll keep that in.
Maybe.
What's that?
Maybe I'll bless it.
Okay. Well, take a look at it, because you're, you're, the other, the other attorney looked at it, but I need you to give us the final blessing on it.
Um, I'll see if he was right or not.
You'll check his work.
I'll check.
All right. Sounds good. Okay. That's that, that's all I have for that. I think the only thing left now is to do FYI and then move to public comments and board comments. FYI, um, May eighth, uh, one of the things that we have done as a front office is from now on, when people use this room, and a number of groups do it, from the Donahue Committee to, uh, River Fest Committee, to the Fire Commissioners, instead of opening up the front of the building, which is on a different alarm panel, and it, and opening and closing door, we're just going to make this room available. So it might be bigger than the cozy confines of the work session room, but this will be the only one that we're going to make available. So if people have them on the same nights, they may have to stagger their times a little bit, but that's one of the things that we are going to do. So here's a list of, of what's going on in regards to that. May eighth at seven P.M., right here in the village boardroom, a River Fest meeting. May ninth, seven P.M., right here in the village boardroom, a zoning board meeting. May thirteenth, seven P.M., right here in the village boardroom, the village board's next work session. May fourteenth, six P.M., right here in the village boardroom, Fire Commission meeting. May twentieth, seven P.M., village boardroom, village board meeting. And as I recall going forward, and Lori Bethos will be your first, I think, first summer, right? Is that July and August are the only two months where we can condense, we combine the work session and the business meetings, and we only have one meeting those months. All of the months, the other ten months, we have the two separate meetings. Okay. With that being done, I'm going to go ahead and open it up for the final public comment. Anybody from the public wish to speak? Seeing none, I will move forward. Sir?
Mr. Mayor, a question. I have on my draft, uh, minutes, and I might have missed this, for the board to adopt the prior minutes from the reorg meeting.
I did not do that. Yeah, I didn't, I did not. You're right. Um, you're right. So the two, uh, so the, the meeting minutes for the special meeting, which was, where is it?
April first.
April first.
So April first was, oh, I'm sorry. So I'm going to make a motion for the board to approve the minutes for the April first reorganization meeting of the village board and the April eighth work session for the village board. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Hard abstain because of this. I wasn't at the work session.
You weren't at the work session. So, so, so it's just three, three ayes for the work session, four ayes for the reorg meeting. Okay. Um, with that having been done, move on now to board comments. Trustee Peliotis.
I'd like to thank the DPW for all the hard work that has to be done, um, this week for the bulk pickup. It just always looks like a, such a huge task, and I'm so grateful for it. Um, and also thankful that the teacher appreciation luncheon worked out, uh, uh, the firehouse. It's going to be, it's going to be very, very nice to just walk across the street, and hopefully it'll be nice out, and we can spend some time outside, and the teachers really do appreciate that luncheon. And I appreciate, uh, having it there, right across the street. And that's about it. Thanks.
Excellent. Trustee Brain.
I echo Trustee Peliotis, uh, thanks for the bulk pickup. Uh, it's the most wonderful time of the year.
It really is. It's like Christmas.
We actually, we made use of it this year more than usual in my house, and somebody took a functioning water cooler before you guys came out, which was awesome.
Oh, yeah. The pickers.
Uh, the, uh, I would like to wish everybody Happy Earth Day. Today is Earth Day, as the mayor mentioned earlier. Cornwall and Hudson is the, one of the key locations in the modern environmental movement in that the Storm King decision, uh, was the first case that established the right of citizens to have standing for environmental issues in their communities. So before that, citizens couldn't come up and say, hey, you can't build that, you know, whatever kind of, uh, polluting plant or anything like that, bec- and because they didn't have a direct, uh, interest in the property or anything, they couldn't have standing. But the Storm King decision changed that, and that's been the basis for environmental law for a long time since. Um, and just related is that on May fourth is the, uh, Riverkeeper, uh, River, uh, what do they call it? The Riverkeeper Sweep, the River, River Sweep. It's the cleanup.
Sweep, yeah.
It's the cleanup down at, uh, Donahue Memorial Park. So I encourage everybody who's listening or here in the room to, uh, to take part in that wonderful event. And, um, thanks to all, uh, superintendents and their departments, and chiefs and their departments for, uh, and all of our staff at village hall. Happy birthday to Susie, uh, and thank you all for your hard work.
Trustee Carnwright.
Thank you for all your hard work, especially on Bulk Cleanup Day.
All right. Um, I don't think I have anything else. Um, one thing I need to talk to you on a sidebar about is that letter to the Board of Education. We discussed in regards to, yeah, I need, I need you to, but we'll, we'll talk about that maybe tomorrow. All right. All right. Absent that, um, I got nothing, I got nothing left. An hour and forty-six minutes, not bad with all that we had to grind through. So I'm going to make a motion to close the village board's business meeting of April twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four. May I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Keep in mind, the mics are still hot right now. If you say anything, it's going to get picked up until Doris gives me the okay that everything's turned off.
Non-controversial thing to say that people can hear is that I, um, had a quick chat with the superintendent about using the parking space behind the admin building on nights and weekends as overflow parking for any village squares. He was into it. We just added to the kitty of things we have to talk about with that group.
Yeah, yeah, we do.
You know, Jim, you know where they could have parked? They could have parked.